This council meeting in order, would you please stand and join us in the pledge? Mr. Newman, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Standing for a moment of silent prayer meditation. I'd like to also have you be in prayer for the Curry family. Peggy Curry, who is one of our most attended members of the council meeting, passed away. So please be in prayer for the family. Thank you. Melody, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Present.
Councilman Hinkey.
President Dawson.
Present. I'd like to remind everybody to keep their cell phone on silent or airplane mode. And I'd like to remind members in the audience that we do not wear our caps or hats in the council chamber, so I'd appreciate it very much if you took them off. Thank you very much. We have minutes for approval for February 3, 2025 council meeting.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Fish for approval. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes for February 10, 2025 council meeting?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mrs. Hines. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Presentation and introductions, Mayor Rod.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I'd like to have the, there are some members from the street department and, I believe, Central Garage that's here. Would you stand up and come up front?
Just come up front, guys.
You'd stand up and come up front? First of all, I'd like to say that... Do I got them all up? All right, great. Thanks. Yeah. So...
We gotta get Mike Leitner up here. What's he saying?
Is he back there?
He's back there.
Where is he at?
Right there.
Come on, Mike.
I'm not a street department.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, come on, come on.
Building and grounds.
Come on, buildings and grounds, too.
Building and grounds, street department.
Street department, building and grounds. See, he just needs a special invitation, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank the council for the approval of the budgetary items that we ask for these three departments on a, well, every year we asked, we ask you to approve the items that actually, and tools that make their jobs and positions work, not just during the summer, but all year round. And when they have the appropriate tools and when we are supplying them as we need to, they provide the level of service that we all expect for our citizens and our residents. And this last three months has been extraordinary, and I just want you to know what has gone on. I just want to take a moment to, to give the deepest gratitude from this administration to the incredible teams that are behind me. And that would start with the street department and Central Garage and Buildings and Grounds for their relentless dedication for this winter season. Hard work and dedication. They worked 39 out of 40 straight days through February the 21st. They maintained 24-hour two-shift cycles to keep all of our roads safe and clean. Sacrificed personal time, working through ML King Day and President's Day holiday The impact of their work is really worth noting. They ensured that safe and passable worlds were there for our entire community, allowed emergency responders to reach all of their needs, kept businesses open and families safe throughout these harsh winter conditions. A special thanks to Central Garage for maintaining and repaired the plows, salt trucks, and equipment to keep operations running smoothly. Worked tirelessly behind the scenes to support every... Worked tirelessly behind the scenes to support every one of these guys at the Street Department and Buildings and Grounds through every snow and ice removal effort. Because of your efforts, all of you standing up here with me, our community remains safe and connected and moving forward. On behalf of everyone, and I mean everyone, because we all receive acknowledgements about all of these, these three teams that are standing behind me. We receive them every day, actually, but during these harsh months, we receive them on a regular basis. On behalf of all of those who have thanked you, I want to make sure to let everyone know that your dedication did not go unnoticed, and we are very, very grateful for the work that you've done throughout this first quarter of the year. And, and Tori, did you come up as well? Where is he at?
We got Central Garage on the screen, man.
Tori Erwin leads the Street Department team, and we constantly receive reports about the Street Department because of their visibility and the fact that their trucks are out on the roads doing the things that they do. We heard about it over the summer from Johnson Street. We heard about it with, with respect to a pothole when, when something gets into 3-1-1, it's automatically looked at and repaired. Behind the scenes, I just spoke of Buildings and, or, or Central Garage, but Buildings and Grounds, they're right there assisting wherever's necessary in plugging the holes that exist when all of these guys and, and women are out doing their jobs so tirelessly. So, on behalf of the city and on behalf of all of those who I've received congratulations from about them, I just want to say thank you, and I wanted to bring them in front of you and let you know what they've done over the last three months. Thank you all for your support in what you do. I would have had donuts, but it's in the evening, so I'll let y'all have one. Nobody get full on you now. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You guys are welcome to stay for this wonderful city council meeting, or you can go home and enjoy your families, which I, which I would probably do. Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Josh. Appreciate you, bro.
Mayor, you still...
Yes, I think it's, I think I'll turn...
Alex. Is it Alex?
Yes, I'll turn the mic over to Alex.
Would you close those doors for me back there? Thank you.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good. Are they gonna, do they show the PowerPoint? I'm Alex Otto, the Director of Communications. And I'm here before you today just to go over an exciting time in the city. We are kicking off the Aspire Construction Season for 2025. And that is going to include a series of transformational, once-in-a-lifetime investments, building the Elkhart of tomorrow. And those fall into a couple, four main categories, improving quality of place in neighborhoods while upgrading the infrastructure and public safety capabilities needed to support a vibrant city. And I just wanted to go over a few of the major projects that will be coming out in the next, next three to four months. So we can go to the third page there. First, we've got the Benham Avenue closure. That is starting tomorrow. We've got a kickoff event as well at 10:30 a.m. We'll be at the Y parking lot at the Benham Underpass, and that is the, the start of, of the busy season, so. And that's a project that will be accomplishing a couple of things. It'll be reducing flooding in the area. Our, Tori was hard at work with Public Works, putting in a lift station that is an unsung hero. It pushes water out and helps with flooding in the Benham Avenue area, which has historically been an issue with that neighborhood. And then there will be a beautification and a traffic calming measures that come out of that project. In March, we also have the Oakland Wastewater Storage Tank Project that will be starting. And for specific questions on that, I defer to Tori. He is much more in tune with what that actually encompasses. Next up, we've got the Flats at Pine Creek. I want to make sure that all of you know that was formerly called Crossroads 41, and the developer changed the name on that. So if you have anything referring to Crossroads 41, that is the Flats at Pine Creek. And that will be kicking off in May, and that is a project that is going to be bringing in, addressing some of the city housing needs. And 13% of the units will serve individuals and families below 80% adjusted median income. Do the next one. We're also kicking off in May, 515 East, which also addresses housing needs and also will serve primarily 80% adjusted median income families. The next one. This is a finish. So this is the Casopolis Gateway and Streetscape. If you've driven over the I-80 overpass, you've seen that they've done quite a bit of work over there, and they will be finishing that sometime in quarter two. Some of that's weather dependent, because they gotta plant stuff and finish making it beautiful, but that project will be wrapping up here in the next few months. And we can go to the next one. The Woodland Crossing is a pretty large-scale project that will have many milestones. The current milestone we're at right now in March will be the Goodwill Ribbon Cutting. That is being put on by the Goodwill, but we'll make sure that we get communications about what time and when that event's happening to all of you, so that you can be present if, if possible. And we can go to the next one. This is not particularly an aspire project. Aspire projects are typically, you know, transformational, but I did want to note that the Blazer Boulevard Railroad Crossing, which many of us have driven across and complained about, is getting redone. And I, please note, the city is not overseeing that project. That is being done by Patriot Railroad, and it was, we're very, we're all very excited for that one to happen. I live just down the street, so I'm particularly...
It's transformational, trust me.
It is transformative. That's why I felt like we needed to bring it up. And that will be also starting in March, so. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions, Alex? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Well, we're excited.
Looking forward to it. I'll tell everybody orange.
We will touch base again with you guys probably in May to go over the next sort of a three or four-month span of projects that are wrapping up or starting.
Thank you. Master Plan, Parks and Recreation. Mr. Zarnacki.
Good evening, council. My name is Jamison Zarnacki, the Superintendent of Elkhart City Parks, and I've got Matt Moyers, our Special Projects Coordinator, who will be helping with this. If we've done our jobs right, you and 53,500 other people have heard about the Owl Parks Master Plan, and we're excited about it. We've been busy, quite busy, and I'm excited to share a little bit about it with you. So... All right, perfect. So, we've been working with Troyer Group. They were the same ones who had done the Sterling Master Plan, also the Elkhart Environmental Master Plan. And so we worked with them. They won the proposal. We really loved their commitment to public engagement, and they had some neat ideas, and we were excited that they came in at a, at a really great cost for us. So, next slide, please. As we've moved into this, we decided, where we came up with a slew of wonderful things for this plan that are a little different than the last. Today, we'll just go over some high stuff, keep it high level. This is just a check-in. It's not the final, obviously, so just want to give you guys a heads up of where we're at, let the community know that there's still time to be engaged, and give you an update on where we're at. We're about 75% through of the planning stage, so still some great stuff. Go over the overview, have you talk about the engagement, and then some highlights and next steps. Next slide. Great. So, our plan is focused on these tenants or pillars, as you can think about them, for where we are basing a lot of the strategies and actions out of this plan, and then also over the next five years of what this would look like between, you know, ecological, ecological diversity and blooming, expanding, playing, amplifying our parks, and connecting. So, these are the tenants. I won't go through each of those, but know that as you look through those, a lot of those will be action categories that we will focus out through the next five years. Community engagement has been huge. Hopefully, you've seen us on the news, you've seen us on the radio, you've heard us on the radio. We've been out there. The whole team has. We've walked and we've door knocked, we've hit houses, we've had over 22-plus focus group meetings, we've had at least 20 public engagement meetings. We've been pushing heavily. We had a four-part speaker series in the beginning to start with the education on the importance of master plans and why a good master plan is necessary and what it looks like, and we heard from some wonderful landscape architects over, that were nationwide, actually. So, and then they did some touring and helped us with some ideas. We've had a survey that's been ongoing. We did a statistically valid survey that we ran through the water bill, and now we are on a public engagement survey. So if you haven't taken it, please do. If you know anybody, please spread the word. The Elkhart Park Foundation has sponsored graciously three different gift cards for $50 each that people can earn if they go into it for a raffle. So we really want to hit that public engagement. If we're doing our jobs well, this plan is not just for us as stakeholders, it's for the whole community to be able to say, I had an opinion, and I was listened to, and, you know, we'll see what happens with that, right? Not everything that people are shouting out will be able to be in this plan, but we definitely want their, their vision and their, their, their ideas. So a little bit, oh, I'm sorry, next. I jumped right over. Apologize. That's the engagement piece. Next slide, Jim, please. That's a little bit about what this has looked like for the engagement side, and then I'll push the next few slides over to Mr. Moyers to go over some of the next things, and be back. Thanks.
Good evening. Let's start with...
Get your name, sir, please.
I was trying to get to the slide. My name is Matthew Moyers. My office here is City Hall. I'm with the Parks Department, and I'm the Special Project Coordinator. I wanted to thank many of the common council members who I have seen already at the public engagement pieces. Thank you very much. Can we go to benchmarks and trends, please? Part of the process of the master plan is doing an assessment, not just of our department, but also on the nationwide level. What is happening in other departments, what's happening in the industry? And we've just completed that process, and we've completed the benchmarking process of cities of similar size or similar demographics to find out what they're doing very well and how the city of Elkhart compares to them. Our benchmarks and trends analysis has come up just a few high-level points I wanted to bring out, and that's the value of local and regional differentiation. The city of Elkhart's park department and public lands are not going to look like anyone else's. Every park will have its own flavor. Elkhart has its own flavor, and I think that's a real benefit to us in taking a look at how our system works and how it can serve our community. Diversified partnerships are a national trend. Parks and recreation now are forming productive ties with businesses that hasn't been traditional. They're more connected to the health and wellness community and looking at how you impact the community. Parks, trails, public lands are vital pieces of getting the community active. That's a comparatively new setup. In designing parks, there's a greater focus now on durable funding, and that is when you design or conceive or maintain a park, the vision is how are you going to fund it, how are you going to maintain it, how are you going to update it? And those are critical to the design at the very beginning of the process. That's a national trend that we think will serve us very well to include in our planning. And nature planning is also comparatively new, and that's a foresightful integration of naturalistic elements to every level of park and recreation opportunity. That serves not just the system and the people who use it, but it also serves the pollinators and the natural environment. Those are some of the benchmarking trends that we've already identified, and that we're incorporating into the plan. Let's do the next slide, please. The next one is the level of service, and that's kind of an understanding of how well we're doing, what our targets are. Level of service might be as simple as understanding how many acres you have for your population, but it's also really valuable in understanding how many tennis courts you have per 10,000 people, what percentage of the population do you have that's within a 10-minute walk to a quality of park. Level of service is kind of the standard that we set for how we're going to go ahead and design our park system and how we're going to run it to most effectively serve the population. Let's do the next slide, please. This master plan is going to use a quantifiable impact, not just for our park systems, but also for our programs. There are five key drivers that we're using to go ahead and measure all the parks in the system. It's a social mobility impact, a neighborhood impact, health and wellness impact, an ecological resiliency impact, and a system impact. I'm just going to touch briefly on those five drivers. The social mobility impact has a lot to do with how people can access parks, trails, and systems, and how it serves them. Can they get to a park easily? Does it reinforce their ability to, to access the services in the city? Neighborhood impact. Does this park make the neighborhood more desirable? Does it increase property values? Does it make it a more attractive place to, to raise a family? Health and wellness. Does this park support recreation programming that can be used for a healthier lifestyle? Ecological resiliency. We have many properties along the river. Do these properties help mitigate flood damage? We have many open spaces. Are these spaces designed to reinforce our ability to handle flood damage and storm, storm winds? Those are important considerations in the system. And the last one is system-wide impact. How are we enhancing the economics of the city? Does this make our ability to get people to the services they desire most effectively? So those are the impact drivers that we're taking a look at and weighing all of our parks in and evaluating our services. Next slide, please. At the very top, again, 30,000 feet up view, some of the key findings that have come out in the public discussion and in the process so far is that Elkhart is a four-season city. We've got ice skate. We've got a few winter activities, but in discussion with the public, they're looking for more opportunities to use our system in the wintertime. I think there's an opportunity for us to take a look at year-round usability to make our four-season city also include a four-season park and public land space. I think there's a real opportunity for us to lean into the health and wellness component, to become a partner with the Elkhart County Health Assessment, to find ways that we can use this system as tools for the entire community's health. Of course, the, Owl Parks Initiative, which is how we're labeling this master plan process, is going to go, go on beyond this, this planning process. is going to go on beyond this planning process. The request from the community is tell us more. How do we get more involved? How do we become more involved in our parks? How do we understand our services better? We're going to go ahead and try and include ways to get the community engaged in this process long beyond just the planning. I think that that kind of gives you an overview of many of the pieces we've already put together, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt. So, next steps. Where do we go from here? Page. So, as we are almost 75% through, the next steps are going to be finalizing our goals, creating our actionable steps. We really want this to not just be a broad DNR checkmark box, but a strategic plan that allows us to think comprehensively, synthesizing data, understanding the community needs and the wants, and blending those to figure out what's the best approach for us as a parks agency to make the impact that we all want to see within the city. We know parks are important. We know they engage neighborhoods. They know that they can be ecological benefits. We know they can be economic drivers, but to do them well, to make it excellent, that's the service that we want to provide. That's the standard that we're trying to set. So, that's what our plan is moving forward on. If you know anybody, if anybody's able to become engaged in these next few public meetings that we'll have for community conversations, if they want to participate, there's still time in the survey, as I've said. After this, we will set over a opportunity to have the public review the plan one more time as a final public opportunity, and then it'll be submitted to the DNR for April 15th. Once it's approved through the DNR, it'll be conditionally approved, it'll come back to the park board, and we'll bring it back to the mayor's office and bring it back to council for ratification. So, that's the less fun part about this plan, is the ratification and process, but I'm telling you, it's awesome. We've had a lot of good, enriching conversations. People are out here, and they care, and it's exciting. So, for that, I will leave the group. And Jonathan Gielis has joined us online. He's coming back from Ohio, so he couldn't be in today, but if you have any questions, we'll take them briefly, and I appreciate it.
You have any idea how much awesome it's going to cost?
Just enough. Just enough.
And will that be part of the 2026 budget? How is that going to factor in?
Yes, and the 27, 28, 29.
And the 28, 29, okay. You're thinking, thanks. Any question, any more questions for James? Yes, sir.
A public question about Weston Park. What is happening there currently? Not to sidetrack you from your great presentation.
Hey, thank you. So, what's great about this is that we don't have to wait the next five years to see awesomeness happen in our parks. You can look out at Weston Park, and you can see that progress is continuing. We've got six new playgrounds that are being built this spring, and so Weston is happening right now. They'll be taken apart. Geraldine Thursby should be ready to go as well for the site prep. Currently, we're staging and beginning to prepare for the installation, and Buildings and Grounds is helping us get the sites ready. So, we're hands-on, and ribbon cuttings will be coming up soon, and we'll publicize those. And yeah, it's exciting. Yep.
Any other questions?
It's done.
James, I want to thank you for the work you're putting into the parks and efforts, especially into the Uri Park, and I had a pleasure going out with you Friday, and I was kind of blown away by how some of the residents, who I didn't think would be interested and want to give a survey, gave a survey, and they were very insightful for the future of the parks. And I didn't realize how many people would visit the park, and the ones who don't visit, they, you know, would tell us if you did this and that, then we would come, and you don't realize how impactful a park is to a neighborhood and to the, what was the radius? We just went within the...
Mile and a half.
Yeah, and...
10-minute walk.
And it was a lot of input, so even, I got called into a couple of homes. I didn't think I would get a survey, and I was shocked, you know, how many people really are, you know, looking for a brighter future with the parks in our neighborhood, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you walking with us.
Thank you, James, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. Returning back to unfinished business, reports of the council committees. There are no reports. Ordinance on second and third reading, would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-7 by title, please, Melody?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-7 and ordinance amending ordinance number 6008 to recognize the positions corresponding classifications and maximum salaries for the employees of the Lerner Theater within the appropriated budget of the Lerner Theater for the year 2025.
I get a motion and a second to adopt this on second reading?
So move.
We got a motion from Mr. Crabtree, a second from Mr. Mishler. Council discussion. Seeing none, open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? None, we turn it back to the council, and the other, further council discussion. Seeing none. Melody, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Mishler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crabtree?
Yes.
President Dawson?
Aye.
Third and final.
Got a motion from Mr. Crabtree, a second from Mr. Mishler to pass on third and final. Melody, would you read this by title? And do a roll call vote, please.
Proposed ordinance 25-0-7 and ordinance amending ordinance number 6008 to recognize the positions corresponding classifications and maximum salaries for the employees of the Lerner Theater within the appropriated budget for the Lerner Theater for the year 2025. Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Mishler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
President Dawson?
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. There are no tabled ordinances, resolutions, there are no ordinances on first reading. Resolution, would you read proposed resolution 25-R-03 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-R-03, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, terminating by agreement the economic revitalization area and memorandum of agreement between the city of Elkhart and Hydro Extrusion USA LLC, for which no tax abatement benefits have been claimed or received.
I get a motion and a second to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Curry. Mr. Huber?
Yeah, good evening, council. Mike Huber, Director of Development Services, City of Elkhart. Just a couple items, next two items are both kind of some, a couple cleanup items through the tax phase-in process from last year. Hydro is a company that came in, they were granted, they were granted a phase-in by the council as we were trying to, working with them to try to secure final execution of memorandum of grant, of memorandum of agreement on the project. Dragged on for a little while, they indicated, as we were getting closer to the end of their ERA, they indicated that internally, some things had changed, and they decided not to do the project as a company. Understanding that, given the short period of time left on the ERA, we initiated the process to just go ahead and terminate the ERA, which they were comfortable with. Doesn't mean if they, the project comes back internally and they decide to make the decision, they can't come back through the process again. It's just a way for us to kind of end this and get them out of the system.
Let the record indicate that Councilman Hinke has joined us. Any, Mr. Mishler?
Yes, thanks, Mike. Will we be seeing this resolution and this abatement in front of us as we review the abatements? This is pulled from...
Correct. So, they never, they never executed the agreement, they never started the project. The only thing that would come through CF1 is once a project is actually started and assessed, that starts the clock on a CF1 process.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Huber. Mr. Hinke?
I apologize for being late. I'm blaming Stan because the front door was locked. Is there clawback? Was there...
This was never a project that was ever initiated. There was never, it never made it to that point, so there's no clawback, there was no benefit ever granted for this project.
I'm assuming...
Correct. Correct.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the public, if they want to, public, who would like to speak with regards to this resolution. Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Would you do a roll, we just by title, do a roll call vote?
Proposed resolution 25-R-03, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, terminating by agreement the economic revitalization area and memorandum of agreement between the city of Elkhart and Hydro Excrusion USA LLC, for which no tax abatement benefits have been claimed or received. Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Mishler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilman Hinke?
Aye.
President Dawson?
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Would you read proposed resolution 25-R-64 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-R-04, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, approving agreement for the repayment of tax phase-in benefits between the city of Elkhart, Indiana, and Champion Manufacturing Incorporated and County Road 17 Land Development.
A motion and a second to adopt this resolution?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hinke, second by Mr. Fish. Mr. Huber?
So, many of you will remember during last year's CF1 compliance process, we noted to you all that Champion Manufacturing, which had had a kind of a spotty record of compliance over its term of its, of its phase-in, I think it was a five-year, had in fact closed operations and violated the terms of their MOA, which triggered our ability to clawback the benefits that they had received. The legal department and the, our team worked hard to quantify the amount of resource, or the amount of benefit that was actually given and the amount of benefit to actually be clawed back under the rules of the statute and our MOAs. So, this is kind of just the final step in the process. We've come to an agreement on the clawback. The taxes to be paid back will actually be, half of them will be put on this year's spring tax installment, and the other half will be put on next year's spring tax installment. The company asked for that, as a matter of fact, so that they didn't, they didn't have the money to come up with all of it at once, so we allowed them to do it over two years instead of just all at once. But we're all getting, we're getting all the resources back, or all of the benefit that we're entitled to, back.
Questions? Mr. Mishler?
Similar to last time, since they did receive benefits, will we be seeing this in our CF1 review?
No, we took care of everything last year. We terminated it, we did all of the steps necessary. This is just bringing closure to the process with us sending the final agreement stating that everybody understands what the terms are and how the payment's going to be made back.
Thank you.
Mr. Hinke?
Okay, so when we say we're getting all of our money back, is it 100% of any abated taxes?
So, there's, there's a formula that is prescribed in both the statute and in our MOAs, that in the years they were compliant, there is a portion of that, there's, they're allowed to keep a portion of some of what they were compliant in the years they were compliant. I think John has a probably better handle on the formula than I do, but we are getting back everything that we're allowed to take back.
Good evening, council. Janice for Corporation Council. The memorandum of understanding prescribes that the city has the right to pursue and recover a portion of the tax benefit that they receive in relation to their compliance, or stated otherwise, in relation to their non-compliance. I determined based upon, well, actually, based upon the council's past determinations that in two years, they were compliant in a five-year schedule. That equates to 40% compliance, 60% non-compliance. We annualized that over, over the five-year period so that we could determine how much in each year they would be entitled to receive based upon a 40% compliance rate. Because they received a greater proportion of the benefit in the early years of the tax abatement, they actually received a windfall or a, an amount of benefit greater than their performance level. We were able to reclaim the entirety of that 60%, which equated, which then, in the formula, you can see it all spelled out in painful mathematical detail in my, in my correspondence to the company demanding everything that the city is entitled to receive back, and without compromising on that amount, the company agreed to pay it with the one provision that we consulted with the county on, and that was whether it can be, as requested, spread out over two years of tax bills. So, the first portion will be placed on the spring installment that's on its way to the printing company now, and the second, the second installment on taxes or tax benefit recovered will be next year.
No, I appreciate that, but the follow-up, if I may, several fold, I have problems with this. One, we have induced legal fees, so we have to go through, you're not, you don't work for free, and other, it was given another service that we didn't agree to, they should be covering legal fees in addition to. There is a cost of money, so the interest because of a two-year payback, I don't find that's fair to taxpayers either. Finally, who came up with the equation? Because it would seem to me, rather than the years they were compliant, quite honestly, it's ambiguous on compliance the first two years. We even know that within our rules. I would think that we would rather look at the total expenditure promised comparison to the actual expenditure promised overall and come to that percentage. That seems more fair. If, if you said you're going to spend $10 million, and you spent $2 million, do the math.
I think the answer to your question in terms of where the formula comes from, the formula is dictated and directed in the state statute. So, we're following the rules of the statute and determining...
All right, so while, while you're up there, Mike, if I may, is, is this company Champion? If I go back through the minutes, is it one that we made exceptions for and, and altered the standard rules and gave them more leeway to comply?
I haven't gone back to all of the, again, their, their, their phase-in started before I got here, so, and before Drew got here.
I'm letting you know that...
As well, so...
Do we have an answer? Can we get that answer?
I don't believe that, in my time here, we haven't given them any special, in fact, I don't believe they've turned into CF1 since we've stood, since I've been here.
No, because I'd actually, if you don't mind, would like to see the real dollar value of what they did in abated taxes, and then the percentage of what we're really going to get back. And quite honestly, like any other business, if we've added legal costs and all of those things, that takes time, and now we're waiting for them to pay back.
Drew, did you have something you want to add? You stepped up.
True lines, economic development. I just wanted to add, they were, they were compliant in '21, '22, before our time here, and I believe they were, that, it's my understanding, there is not a special exception. I can certainly check that. And then, in '23, pay '24, they were fully compliant. They, they were at the 90% threshold.
Mr. Mishler?
90% expenditure?
For, for job, for jobs and wages, and, and for real property and personal property expenditure.
Mr. Mishler?
So, they were, they made the full investment?
They still own the property?
If they were not compliant, it was jobs, and it was for...
They must still own the property?
They do not own the property. They were tenants.
Paying the property taxes that were...
Okay, wait, 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 wait. Mr. Mishler had a question.
John, two questions real quick. Do you know how many abatements we've had to initiate a clawback in, in the past five years or so? We don't see this very often, do we?
This is the first.
First?
Yes.
Okay, and second, say, could we pursue additional legal action to recoup legal fees after this resolution, if we so decided to do that, for what Council Hinke was discussing?
Under, under Indiana law, the ability to recover attorney's fees is strictly applied. It must be provided specifically by statute in any legal content, contest, to give rise to the recovery of legal fees. Under the statute specific to tax abatement, there is a moment when legal fees may be recovered, but not at this point. The statute lays out a procedure whereby the determination of non-compliance is made, the council made that determination. It then directs the city to meet with the taxpayer and determine whether there is It then directs the city to meet with the taxpayer and determine whether there is an agreement on how much tax needs to be repaid. If the parties are unable to come to agreement on the amount of tax that should be repaid, then the council may set that level and the parties may litigate the issue in a court of law. It is only after the action is filed in a court of law that the statute authorizes the recovery of attorney's fees, if the city is successful at that point.
So, yeah, just to dovetail on that, I'm just not quite clear, is it state statute that allows the claw, the, the legal action, the legal fees, et cetera?
Yes, after all of the administrative process has been exhausted and the parties are unable to reach an agreement on what the amount of the tax should be.
Do you have anything in our, on our books that says we can do that at our level? You know, so we'd have...
We're empowered by the state statute. You don't have to do anything special. It's there for us.
Again, I'm, I want to go back to one piece. Are they a defunct company at this point with the filing of bankruptcy? And how do we guarantee that the property owner, because it is the address that is under abatement, right?
Yeah.
How do we hold the actual owner, non-tenant accountable for that?
So, I mean, to your point, is my understanding, the company still operates, they operate in Florida, they closed the, the Elkhart location and they relocate, and they ended, they moved some employees to Florida and they terminated some employments when they closed operations in Indiana and they closed operations in Elkhart. So they are still operating as a company, which is why we are able to negotiate that they're willing to pay the payment that they're due, that they have to pay, the maximum amount that they have to pay, they're willing to pay it, they just needed two years to do it, which was the agreement John referenced being made. So, the, your second part of the question?
Well, I mean, because they're not the property owners.
So, no, you're right. The property owner is actually County Road Seventeen LLC. They're the ones on the hook. They're signatories to this agreement as well. They have a contract with Champion to make sure Champion gets it done. Either way, County Road Seventeen pays us, they go after and litigate with Champion to get it back from them. So it's not directly the company. You're right, the property owner, County Road Seventeen LLC, will make the payments, but they'll, they have the legal document, contracts with Champion to make sure.
Well, thanks for covering all the bases and doing the homework, because it's a sticking point.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anyone in the public would like to speak with regards to this resolution? There are none, return it back to the council. Melody, would you do a roll call vote on this resolution, please?
Councilman Holtz?
Aye.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Mishler?
Aye.
Councilman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilman Hinke? President Dawson?
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. There are no new, there are no vacation hearings, other new business, other new business. Mr. Curry?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I got this letter in my packet from Mrs. Fields over on Concord. She still was concerned about the trash that wasn't picked up a few weeks ago, and she wrote a nice long letter. I see she copied to you, Mr. Dawson, and Mrs. Hines, and Mr. Irwin, and Mayor Rod. So, all right, she didn't get it to Alex Holtz, but it was a good letter. But also, I attended the human relate, I mean, yeah, human relations meeting, and they have a fair housing poster contest going on now, and it's pretty good contest. There's, it's for kids in third and fourth grade and fifth and sixth grade, two different categories, and the third prize is $25 and the second prize is $50 and first prize is $100. And I have a few copies of this, if somebody would like to take one to a kid, they're due back by the 10th, and I think they would do a president, a presentation before the council with the winners on the, at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Other business?
Uh, this, so that we had two abatements, right, that, that were nullified this evening in one form or another, so it is new and different, and I would hope that we would just revisit maybe our process and make sure this is not becoming a standard of any kind or any, anything on our part. Secondly, I had a reason to call, not a very good one, but to call Chief Melanase, got an immediate response. Neighborhood talking about the lack of patrols, and quite honestly, I find the opposite, so. Sleep, I actually put earbuds in and listened to the scanner at night, and I heard someone pulled over. I've, that. So, well done, chief. I'm sorry to bother you during those times. It's great to get a response right away so I can give back to constituents on that, but I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other new business? Now, Neighborhood Association reports, I'm sorry, reports, mayor, board of works.
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, you, you, you heard about today, the efforts and commitments that we are making behind Unbridled Service with Buildings and Grounds, the Street Department, as well as Central Garage. You also had a chance to review the Aspire construction projects for 2025, and they are long and deep. I think I heard council, President Dawson's talking about the cones, and we'd like to say, short-term pain for long-term gain, and the projects will begin as we speak and, and literally with a, with an effort towards those four platforms that we've talked about within Aspire, with an extra emphasis on density of housing. And those housing units will be a broad spectrum across our entire city, everything from the River District to Huck Street, to out on Sterling, to County Road Seventeen, and in the, the Benham area as well. And so we will continue to bring you updates on the Aspire projects on a quarterly basis, and that's what, what Alex Otto was doing for this upcoming quarter. And if there are additional questions concerning them, please don't hesitate to reach out. You also heard about the Parks Plan and their ability to take what we are trying to do inside of neighborhoods and on a broad spectrum within our parks to comprehensively plan for the five years, but in addition to imprint themselves inside of our neighborhoods to ensure that the amenities that we're bringing to parks are going to be not just reviewed as, at a, a fun thing to do, but an experience. And that's what community and residents will support and take care of. And so I just want to say thank you to the staff for their hard work in putting not just these presentations together, but to continue to work on those elements that we know are going to be wonderful elements for all of our community to be able to enjoy. I also want to bring your attention to a date that I'd like for you to save, which is April the 22nd, which is the state of the city for 2025, which will review 2024 and also speak more in depth about the projects that we're, we just talked about, but also about the return to our residents for the efforts that they make in supporting not only the city, but our, but your efforts as well, as we continue to build on what we've done in the past five years and, and, and moving forward.
Simon, where's your state of the city, mayor?
It's going to be at the Lerner, and it's going to be at...
Five thirty?
Five thirty. It's going to be at five thirty on the 23rd, on the 22nd.
Thank you. Neighborhood Association reports. Curry?
Yeah, I'd like to report for the Pemaran Neighborhood Association. We met yesterday and we passed out these posters at the meeting, and we had another good meeting, the few of us that showed up, it looked cold for some people, but anyway, we also honored my sister who passed away, because she always came to those meetings, and we thanked the family, thanked everybody for what they did. But also, Arthur Fisher passed away, and Arthur was our first neighborhood president. So it was kind of a somber meeting, but, you know, Arthur, I talked to him about a week ago before he died, and there were some issues in the neighborhood that he wanted us to address, so that's the kind of guy Arthur was. And his funeral would be Friday at Harsterguth, with Enneman Funeral Home, at, the viewing starting at 12 o'clock, and the funeral at one. And then we went on and discussed our past, how we started under Arthur, because we met in his basement. We had probably 30, 40 people in that basement because of what was going on in our neighborhood, and the neighbors said, we're not going to put up with this in our neighborhood. We had a lot of graffiti going on and other stuff that, and anyway, we fought back with that, with the, a lot of the men in the neighborhood, and we were able to shut it down in our neighborhood. We've been meeting ever since 2007 and just really enjoy opening our neighborhood up to everybody that come. And Jay Little happened to show up and a couple of the other neighbors and gave us a history lesson of our neighborhood when there was a, a time when the Mennonite community was going to build a park, I mean, a hospital in our neighborhood where Woodland Crossing is. So that was a big discussion, a lot of people had a lot of questions over when they, when that happened and what happened to stop the project, and anyway, so, like I said, it was just another good discussion and good to hang out with the neighbors and see where we've been many years before we all moved in there and where we plan to go with all the good things that's going on at Pemaran Mall, Woodland Crossing now. Thank you.
Crabtree?
Uh, Mr. President, the Strong Avenue Neighborhood Association will be meeting tomorrow, March 4th at 7:00 PM at Mary Daly Elementary, are located at 1735 Strong Avenue. Our speakers will be representatives from the Indiana Department of Environmental Management as well as the Elkhart Fire Department to be speaking on the recent environmental issue at the Elkhart Clinic. Again, that will be tomorrow, 7:00, Mary Daly Elementary.
Thank you for bringing... Captain in contact. Folks?
You turn your mic on?
Yeah, some folks at the clinic, and it's a little bit of a deeper story than what we were given originally, so I hope to see people there tomorrow evening.
Thank you. All the neighborhood reports, privileged of the floors, anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything that was not on the agenda tonight, please come forward and sign in, please.
Jay Little, thanks, thanks, Councilman Curry, for, for saying that, because I think that that's always an interesting story, that most people don't even know how a boulevard got there going out from Pemaran, Pemaran Middle School. You know, everybody always wonders, like, how did I get there? And I think Ernest Bennett was the person that owned the land, and I know my great uncle, who was head of the mission board, built a house there, and, you know, Carolyn Hayden talked about that, because I think her parents built a house there, or owned a house there for a while, and she owns a house there now. I don't, like, the Criders, and I don't even know who else. I, I had a couple of great aunts that lived there too, that built houses there, so. And it was a very interesting discussion. I was really surprised to hear all the stuff, that I, I've learned some stuff that I did not know. And so, thank you for, thank you for inviting me, and it was a pleasure to come.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. The thing that I wanted to point out tonight is, I noticed this the other day when I was walking my dogs at the Sterling Avenue Park, I walk my dogs there a lot. It's one of my favorite places to walk, because there's almost nobody there, and sometimes I go at night, and the lights are almost always on. I think originally when that park was done, because I came down here when that was still Dumar Water, and that place looked awful, it looked bad for, I don't know, how long ago has it been since I made that park? Like 2010, 2011? I don't even know. Mr. Fish, you were, you were really instrumental in getting that, that along with the guy who was head of zoning, Denny, Dennis Correll, to get that. And originally, I think that the Boy Scouts, there's a berm there, and they planted fern, or not fern, well, some kind of conifers there that were supposed to help buffer. And unfortunately, the soil was too rich when they did it, and then we had a drought a year or so later, and so mo, many of those trees have died. And there's a few that are there, but they're few and far between. And so now they've, now there's a lot of weed trees there, and I know that there's an apartment building, I think, or maybe even two that are going in there, where Wren, Wren would, what used to be the Wren crossing out to Main, would, would go. And it would be great to see that berm or berm redone and those trees, trees that were supposed to be in there, and maybe, I don't know, the Boy Scouts, I think, did that originally. I'm not, y, y, you'd know more about it, Dwight, than I would, or Councilman Fish, than I would, and, because you were really active in getting that done. And I'd really like to see something nice for that area, because I think it would add to, if there's going to be apartments that are going to be built there, I think it will add to that, it'll add to the park area that's there, and, like I said, that's one of my favorite places to go, because I walk my dogs there, and it's, it's nice. One other thing that somebody might make a note of is there are no dog poop bags there. Now, I bring my own, but there's a lot of people that do not. And so there are large piles of dog waste there where people have to walk, and there's lots of kids that come there, especially in the summer, and I see this, and it makes me kind of upset, because they, I mean, we're talking like Doberman Pinscher-sized dogs that leave nice big piles of you-know-what, and I'd like to see that not happen. So if we could make, do something with regard to having, you know, those things are available in some other parks, but they're just not, they've not made it there yet. One other thing might be nice to have there would be one porta potty. So, you know, I mean, I realize that that, you know, Mr. Fish, that's your district, and, and then we have three council at large, but I think that that's, those things would make that place all, it's nice, it's the, it's the start of the Hart City Bike Trail. There's parking there, there's tools there to fix your bike. Trying to think of what else is there. There's a pavilion there that's an open-air pavilion, and, you know, there's a lot of recycled stuff from Miles Lab. Most people don't even know the, like, the granite steps that were at Miles, our park, or our makeup tables and some other things like that. And I think that that's really an interesting thing, because I remember when Danny was talking, when Dennis Correll was talking about it, he said that we were going to recycle. And so a lot of stuff that's there would have gone to the landfill, and it did not go. I don't know how many thousands or maybe even tens of thousands of pounds of, you know, because granite weighs a fair amount. Those tables look, are, they're fairly substantial, so. But I don't know how many people go there to that park and look at it, but it's something that's, it's a very unique park, and I'd like to see, I'd like to see more parks like that, because it's, it's, it's unique in and of itself because of what's there. And if you know something about the story of it, you know, just like, for your neighborhood, Mr. Curry, Councilman Curry, you know, when you know stuff like that, it makes it more That's kind of all I have, but I'd, I'd really like to see something done to fix that park and make that park, especially that berm a little nicer, especially if we're going to have apartments in there, because it'll make it quieter for people that live there. Because those trains can be, even though they don't whistle near as much as they used to, they can still be loud, and they do whistle once in a while, so, thanks.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience? There are none, return it back to the council floor. No scheduling of committee meetings, acceptance of communications.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree. Second by Mr. Fish, we accept communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Got a motion to adjourn. Got a motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Mrs. Hines. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.